Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to a special council open session to deal with some planning applications. Our first item is to, of course, call the meeting to order and ask if there's any declarations of pecuniary interest. Seeing none, I'd like a motion to adjourn for three public meetings that are listed under item 3Z0320 for 533 Romeo Street South, Z04-20 for 3797 Downey Road 112, and Z05-20 for 1041 Erie Street. Councilor Beatty and Councilor Vazalacos, all those in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried. We'll now proceed to the public meetings. And the first one, and I'll just read the order of procedure. This public meeting is to give council and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to zone change application. Z03-20, the application affects the property with municipal address of 533 Romeo Street South in the city of Stratford. The order of procedure for this meeting is as follows. Staff will present the application. The applicant or their agent will then make a presentation. Council may ask questions for the purposes of clarifying the application, but are cautioned not to make comments or take a position on the application at this public meeting. Registered delegations will be asked for their presentations, comments, and questions. Questions and comments and Q and A will be read by the clerk's office staff member that appear in the live chat section. And the public is advised that if a person has not provided counsel with oral submissions at a public meeting or written submissions before a bylaws adopted or decision is made, the local planning appeal tribunal has the power to dismiss an appeal. The public is also advised that comments expressed in written material presented are a matter of public record for full disclosure. Are there any questions as to this order of procedure? Seeing none, we'll now move forward with the meeting and invite forward Jeff Bannon to present the application at this time, Mr. Bannon.
Thank you. The first application is Z03-20. It was submitted by Baker Planning Group to change the zoning of the property at 533 Romeo Street South from a general industrial I-2 zone to a general industrial I-2 special zone, which will allow for parking at a rate of one space for every 50 square meters. To add, also to add an athletic training facility as an additional permitted use with the maximum gross floor area of 4,080 square meters. The subject lands are located on the south side of Romeo between Park Street and Norfolk. They have an approximate area of 11.3 hectares and a lot frontage of 248 meters. The lands are designated industrial area, which permits a range of uses, including manufacturing, assembling, repair, wholesaling, and storage of goods. Secondary uses that don't detract from the area for industrial purposes or those that do not conflict with existing or potential industrial uses are permitted. The subject lands are zoned general industrial I-2, and it permits a range of uses such as a commercial school, industrial uses, motor vehicle uses, and warehousing. And Romeo Street South is classified as an arterial road. Agency comments have come forward. Building services do not have any concerns with the zone change application, but they do note that works related to the athletic training facility have occurred without a building permit. In order to comply with unsafe billing order and order respecting occupancy have been posted on site due to the establishment of those uses without proper permits. Engineering services do not object to the zone change. They have noted their road widening of 5.185 meters in width is required from Romeo Street and 1.5 meter sidewalk is required to be installed. Transit, the township of Perth East and Opera Thames River Conservation Authority do not have any concerns or objections to the application. We have circulated the application to the surrounding property owners. There was 10 circulations that were sent out. No comments have been received to date, and any comments received after the completion of the report will be provided to the future planning heritage committee. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. Councilor Gaffney.
Thank you, your worship. Going back to the agency comments. I'm just wondering how the width of Romeo Street and the need for sidewalk at the front of this building is directly required for the change being made to the back third of the building.
Through your worship, that has been a request from the engineering department. We will review how appropriate that is when we bring forward a report to the planning and heritage committee. They will be required to deal with other applications and through those other applications, they'll likely be looking for that road widening when they move forward with either through the site plan process.
Any other questions at this time for Mr. Bannon? All right, seeing none, I'd now invite Caroline Baker from the Baker Planning Group to come forward and to provide the applicant's presentation.
Good afternoon to his worship and members of council. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Appreciate Mr. Bannon's overview and some of the history of the zone change application. I'd like to spend some of our time today at the public meeting just going through a little bit more in detail about the proposed facility as well as some of the planning analysis that was included as part of the planning justification report. As noted, it is a zone change for a site-specific I-2 zone to allow for the athletic training facility. As mentioned, it is a large existing site with a single-story industrial building. Currently, about 73% of the space is occupied by ADS Design Solutions. 14% is occupied by Pinnacle Storage Services. And the remaining 13% is occupied by the athletic training facility, being the Pinnacle Fieldhouse Training Academy. There is an existing off-street parking area located on the north side of the property, and a large portion of the site is covered with trees and grass. With respect to the facility that is located within the building, they have leased the space through the owners of the site, and they provide teams and individuals with focused training for athletics such as soccer, golf, hockey, baseball, and pickleball. There is an artificial ice pad, a multi-use turf, soccer and baseball training, batting cages, pickleball courts, a boxing ring, as well as an endurance training area for the improvement athletically of those individuals. This really is more of a specialized athletic training facility as opposed to a general fitness for your overall health that you might join on a monthly basis for a set fee to take an aerobics class or beyond fitness machines. They do service both children and adults through the program. They've had partnerships with the school boards and the various sports organizations, minor hockey, minor baseball within Stratford for use of this facility. I'm hopeful that all of council was circulated. I did prepare a presentation. Now, I know with Zoom it is a bit of a different format, but in there, we just wanted you to have some graphics to see what this facility looked like in the inside in terms of what it offered and also to show the preliminary concept plan. It's our understanding site plan approval will be required should the zoning be approved to recognize the change of use. The intent of the concept plan, which I believe is on slide five of the PowerPoint, just zooms in to show the exterior modifications. They are generally limited to improving the parking area. So this will be, if you've had a chance to visit the site, some of the painted lines aren't as visible, given the age of the property. So there would be some improvements to the marking of parking spaces, improved pedestrian safety to get pedestrians from the parking area into the facility, which is located at the rear of the building, as well as to provide accessible parking. There are no further exterior changes required as part of this development. Included in our planning justification report was an analysis of provincial policy as well as the city official plan, given that this is an industrial area. The report concluded that the zone change is consistent with provincial policy because it provides an ancillary use in an industrial area that does not create any negative impacts or detrimental impacts on the operation of surrounding industrial facilities. As noted, it does not include any exterior facilities. It is all indoors. It will provide for five full-time jobs and will support various clubs and organizations throughout the city. And it does utilize existing leaseable space that has parking and municipal services and will in no way prohibit the long-term use of the site or the building for industrial uses. You'll see from the photos that the additional facilities within the building could be removed over the long term and easily converted back to a number of industrial uses. The planning report also concluded that the zone change conforms to the official plan. It's proposed to occupy 13% of the total gross floor area, being secondary to the traditional industrial uses. It provides additional revenue to the owner of the site that operates an industrial building to support the overall maintenance and functioning of the site as primarily industrial and will help prevent the building from decline of unleased empty space. The owner has confirmed that the existing industrial space, when part of the larger industrial building, has been challenging to lease, and this provides an opportunity to use the space while not hindering future opportunities. You can see from some of the pictures and the indoor facilities, including the pickleball, the hockey rink, and the batting cages, it does require a larger building floor area than is typically available in commercial areas. Through the zone change, we have requested a site-specific definition of athletic training facility, and part of this purpose was to clearly define what the site and the space is intended for. And we provided a definition that it's indoor facilities to make clear that there are not exterior facilities and to indicate that it is for athletic training and/or usage. The parking rate has been requested at one per 50 square meters, which is in keeping with the current parking rate for a commercial school and would generate a requirement for 82 parking spaces. The owners of the facility have indicated their maximum occupancy is 62 parking spaces, and typically they do have around 50 individuals. It's also noted that their facility operates often in the evening and weekends when the industrial uses are closed, which would provide for a greater number of parking spaces that could be utilized. And that concludes my presentation, but I would be happy to answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Any questions for members of council at this time? Ms. Baker, I'll just ask, one is the facility currently in use or is it had suspended use awaiting the outcome of this process?
Thank you for your question. The use has been suspended as we work through the zone change and site plan process. In order to get, if both of those are approved, then the building permit can be issued and the facility could be in operation again.
Thank you. Any other member of council at this time? Councilor Vazalacos.
Just a quick question. Does own China app change application and the specific use? It's for the current footprint of the training facility only or would apply to the entire interior of the building?
Through his worship, in the site-specific zoning, we have proposed a cap on the square footage to what is being used, being a 13% or 4,080 square meters. So it could not be used for the entirety of the building.
Thank you. Anyone further? I do not believe there's any delegations registered with regard to this. Ms. Atkins, is there anything in the public chat window that you would like to read into the record?
Through your worship, there are no comments in the question and answer section at this time.
Okay. I'll ask council one more time if there's anything they would have, they'd like to bring forward at this time. Seeing none, any closing comments, Ms. Baker, on behalf of the applicant?
No further comments, thank you.
Thank you. City council intends to consider this application at a future planning and heritage committee meeting where members of council will have an opportunity for full discussion of the application after reviewing comments received from the public at this time. If anyone would like to receive further notice of this application, please email clerks@stratford.ca. A video of this meeting will be posted to the city's website, and this public meeting is adjourned. Thank you. I will now call our second public meeting to order. And the purpose of this application in this meeting is to give council and public the opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to zone change application. Z04-20, the application affects the property with municipal address of 3797 Downey Road 112 in the city of Stratford. The order of procedure is as follows. Staff will present the application. The applicant or their agent will then make a presentation. Council may ask questions for the purposes of clarifying the application, but are cautioned not to make comments or take a position on this application at a public meeting. Registered delegations, we ask for their presentations, comments, and questions. Questions and comments from the Q and A section will be read by the city clerk's office into the record, and the public is advised that if a person has not provided counsel with oral submissions at a public meeting or written submissions before a bylaws adopted or decision is made, the local planning appeal tribunal has the power to dismiss an appeal. Public is also advised that comments expressed in written material presented are a matter for public record or a matter of public record for full disclosure. Are there any questions as to this order of procedure? Seeing none, we'll now proceed with the application. I'd ask Jeff Bannon to present the application. Mr. Bannon.
Thank you, your worship. Application is Z04-20. It has been submitted by Plan Baker Planning Group, and they are intending to change the zoning of the property at 3797 Downey Road 112 from a general industrial I-2-16-H zone to a general industrial I-2 special zone, which is intended to permit a restaurant with a maximum gross floor area of 210 square meters, an accessory drive-through, a gas bar, a neighborhood store with a maximum gross floor area of 210 square meters, and a car wash as additional permitted uses. African is also requesting that the existing holding symbol be removed from the zone and provisions to require a minimum of one parking space for the car wash, minimum of one parking space for every four dining seats for the restaurant, and to allow parking spaces to be 2.8 meters wide by 5.6 meters in length. Subject lands are located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Lauren Avenue East and Downey Road 112. Lands have an area of approximately one hectare. The lands are designated as industrial area, which permits a range of uses, including manufacturing, assembly, repair, wholesaling, and storage of goods. The subject lands are currently zoned general industrial I-2-16-H, and the holding provision is in place to prevent development on the lands until sufficient services are providing, and that holding provision would have to be lifted. Once it has been removed, it would permit a range of uses such as a business office of a consultant engineer, surveyor, car wash, industrial use, or vehicle uses, and warehousing. Lauren Avenue East is classified as an arterial road. We have received comments from engineering services. They note that the application lands are, should include the private laneway where the cul-de-sac required for access off of Downey Street. A road widening of 5.18 meters will be required with future applications for the Lauren Avenue frontage and a 10-meter by 10-meter daylight triangle from the southeast corner of the Lauren Avenue and Downey Street intersection. I do want to note that the applicant has submitted a functional servicing report and a transportation impact study. Both of those have been circulated engineering, and we are waiting for comments on those, and that will come forward with a future report to planning and heritage. Transit, Fire Department, and Building Services also have no concerns. A notice was sent out to 20 surrounding property owners. One resident did ask the city to look at the impacts of allowing commercial uses into industrial zones and how that change may impact annexations and our supply of industrial lands. We'll report on that when we bring forward a report to planning heritage committee. No other comments have been received to date, and we will bring forward any comments to the planning heritage committee. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. Councilor Henderson.
Wondering where the accessible parking spot will be? I don't see it on the drawing.
Planning through your worship, the planning has not reviewed the conceptual site plan in great detail. They haven't come in for that type of application yet. They will be required to provide accessible parking spaces with any site plan application, and we'll make sure that when they design that, that is included.
Thank you.
Anyone further? Councilor Gaffney.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, I'm sure this has been, has been taken into account. Eventually, whether that happens through our own devices or the provincial government, the ministry of transportation comes along and says we're going to widen Lauren Ave to three or five lanes, and there at some point are going to be intersection changes there. I expect we are leaving ourselves enough space, enough setbacks to be able to do these things.
Through your worship, engineering has commented that a road winding will be required, which is intended to take into account any future road winding that would be needed for that highway expansion. And we'll bring forward further information on that when we come back to the planning heritage committee.
Councilor Gaffney, follow-up question?
Yes, your worship, thank you. The access on to Lauren Ave from this property, do we find that problematic adding another entrance off of Lauren Ave?
Through your worship, that's something that will be looked at when engineering completes the review of the transportation impact study. We don't have those comments ready yet, but those comments will be available with that future report.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon.
Councilor Henderson?
I had another question. When I'm looking at the drawing, it shows, and Councilor Gaffney just reminded me of it, it shows coming in off of Lauren Ave. Now, on the south end of it, it looks like there's going to be two exits there. Are they building a road that's going to come out onto Downey Street?
Through your worship, they own land outside of that area that's shown on the conceptual site plan. So with, with discussions that I've had with Ms. Baker, she has noted that they are looking to put in an internal driveway, and that will give them access from Downey Street.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Thank you, Mr. Bannon. Representing the applicant is Caroline Baker. Ms. Baker, I'll turn the agenda over to you.
Great, thank you. Hello again. Appreciate Mr. Bannon's overview. I'll try and add a little bit further information with respect to the application and some of the technical studies and justification that was submitted as part of the complete application. So the first, I do want to mention that the overall site owned by the owner is 3.43 hectares in size, located at the intersection of Lauren and Downey. You'll probably all know this as a former drive-in movie theater that was a commercially use on the property. The application before council today is for the front portion of the property on the northwest side at approximately one hectare. The remaining approximately 75% of the land area will remain in the general I-2 zone and would not be subject to the site-specific bylaw that is before you. I did have a chance to submit a presentation as well, if you want to follow along or look at any graphics. With respect to the area context, Lauren Avenue is characterized as an industrial corridor from Romeo Street to west of Erie Street. There is, however, a cluster of non-service oriented commercial uses at this intersection that is serviced by two transit routes. Current industrial areas along this corridor are supported by the service commercial uses on the opposite side of Lauren Avenue at Erie Street. There was some very good questions about the concept that was submitted, and Mr. Bannon correctly answered that should the zone change be approved, there will be a full site plan application and detailed review. The intent is, of course, to provide accessible parking. The concept shows essentially four components on the site, the first being a gas bar with 12 pumping stations, as well as a neighborhood store to support the gas bar with a gross floor area of 210 square meters. They're proposing a restaurant with both dining seats and a drive-through, and at this time, the drive-through is showing 18 stacking lanes to avoid any backup within the development. It also does include a car wash that has 11 stacking spaces. Now, that has been divided to ensure there are stacking spaces at the end of the car wash again, so we don't get any conflicts with traffic movement on the site. A separate screened loading area with safe traffic movements has been provided for a full-size transportation truck that can get into, can get into the property from Lauren and can exit on Downey. We understand based on where oil supplies are brought into the site that this would be the best functioning or path of travel for any oil deliveries. You'll see on the concept that just over half the site is proposed to be landscaped with a combination of manicured lawns and a setback at a minimum of 15 meters from both frontages. The remaining six acres will be kept in an industrial zone intended for future industrial development. As Mr. Bannon mentioned, through a significant dialogue with city staff, including the city transportation engineer, it's proposed that a future full municipal road will be provided from Downey, and that will connect to this site as well as any future industrial development. In the interim, it will be constructed as a driveway that'll link to the site, and in the fullness of time will be a full municipal road. In addition to the planning justification report, there were two technical studies submitted, the first being a traffic impact study by Salvini Consulting. Julia Salvini is on the line. Of course, she's muted, but certainly if you have specific transportation questions, she is here to answer those. The study concluded that the development will generate 310 weekday morning trips and 193 weekday afternoon. Now, it is noted in the study that 60% of this estimated travel is already on the network. So you can imagine, because of this use being a gas station, a drive-through restaurant, you're going to pick up a lot of travel that's already on the road network, and they simply, it's very convenient, and they pull into the site to get those services that they need. The Lauren Downey intersection is busy, but was concluded to be at acceptable levels in the peak hours. And the proposed access from Lauren Avenue did warrant a short left turn lane, so that would be heading westbound on Lauren, would need a turn lane to get into the site in order for the proper functioning. And with this improvement, the driveways are expected to operate at acceptable levels and peak hours for all three future traffic scenarios. You will recall that the city has approved municipal funds to update this intersection in 2023. The design, whether that's an increase or addition of turn lanes or roundabout, has not yet been decided, but the traffic study did show that both of those options can be accommodated with this development being approved. And the impact on the site traffic on operations at the intersection will be minimal till 2023, and the development could proceed in advance of those road improvements. MTE was also retained to prepare a functional servicing report, and it was concluded that both sanitary and water are available, there's sufficient capacity to accommodate the development, that there are storm sewers proposed, outlets to the existing storm sewer, and that oil and grit separators will be used for quality control. Through the planning justification report, focus was on the provincial policy statement and the official plan, given the industrial designation of this property, and looking at the secondary ancillary use that is proposed. The report concluded that it provides a supporting service commercial use that will contribute to the attractiveness of the industrial area for future or current and future businesses. The area north and south of Lauren Avenue includes a range of industrial uses and supporting services employed for employees is limited to the commercial area Lauren and Erie, and the development will only utilize 25% of the site. Through the presentation and the planning report, there is an overall graphic prepared showing the entire city with black arrows showing entrances, key entrances to the city, the location of industrial lands, and where there is supporting service commercial uses to support those industrial operations. This analysis was in part taken to demonstrate compliance to the official plan in that it is clearly secondary and supportive of the industrial area. It was concluded through the OP that this development will round out or complete the commercial uses that are located at the intersection of Lauren and Downey, which are on all four corners. The Lauren Avenue industrial area, which comprises the entire The Lauren Avenue industrial area, which comprises the entire southern boundary of the city as well as the Romeo Street industrial area, will be supported by this service commercial area. The site specific zoning bylaw amendment before you is seeking permission for four uses being the gas station, the neighborhood store and restaurant. We have added the car wash as a requested use. It is currently permitted in Stratford zoning bylaw. However, under the draft zoning bylaw, given that the timing is unknown, it is no longer permitted in the I two zone. It has also been proposed that GFA caps be put on each of the uses to limit their size and scale to provide specific car wash requirements. You'll call from a previous project, the current zoning bylaw does not contemplate automatic car washes and the requirements in terms of stacking lanes or parking. And to provide certainty on the required parking for the restaurant with the changes proposed from the current zoning bylaw to the draft zoning bylaw. And that ends my presentation. The owner is available on the call along with Julia Salvini. Should there be any questions? Thank you.
Any members of council have a question for Ms. Baker? Counselor Henderson.
I'm looking at the design of this and I'm a bit confused because it looks like the the way you get to the drive-through restaurant, when you're coming out, the people will be coming out of the of the car wash and you're meeting at the same intersection. Plus there's a road that's coming up there. So there's sort of three Ts there. Or is it far enough apart that it's not going to be a problem? It just it just sort of, when I'm looking at, I'm thinking, how the heck's that going to work?
Through his worship, certainly we are not at the detailed design stage. This is a high level functional design to show that the various components can can fit and certainly I will take that back both to MT who's designing the site plan and the transportation engineer. I would note that there is a significant queuing area after the drive-through. You'll see there's a number of spaces before they meet at that intersection and similarly with the car wash, there is a queuing space at the end in order to provide space and to prevent backup, but certainly we can take that back to the design team to make sure that that functions.
Thank you, Counselor Seven.
Thank you and thank you, Ms. Baker. I'm not sure if this is a question for Ms. Baker or not, but I'm just, I'm just wondering, given that Stratford has already, I mean somewhere between ten and fifteen gas stations and there there are several older locations that are sort of more or less abandoned. That used to be gas stations. I'm just, I guess, just thinking, looking forward, I'm wondering what kind of safeguards there are for the city to is there any sort of guarantee when a gas station is, you know, constructed and then for whatever reason closes down that that land will be made ready for for any development and cleaned up afterward?
Through his worship, I'm not sure if that maybe is a question for the the city planner with respect to remediation contamination. I do know that through gas station approvals, there's a number of TSSA requirements, more modern requirements than some of the older gas stations we might see in town in terms of the tank storage and how they're stored and safety protocols. But I might ask Mr. Bannon as well to weigh in on that.
Mr. Bannon.
Your worship. Yes, there's nothing from planning that requires a gas station to be remediated. We do have brownfield policies in place that 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 encourage the remediation of sites so that they're not abandoned in the future. A lot of those sites could be reused as gas as additional gas bars or with a new tenant. If someone was chose to leave, but I don't think we have any policies in place. In fact, we don't have anything zoning wise that would would force a private landowner to remediate the site after they decided to leave.
Thank you. If I could just, if I could just follow up with Mr. Bannon. So would there be any potential sort of holding or anything to put in place or would that have would that require a new policy altogether?
Through your worship, that that wouldn't be taken care of through like a holding provision in the zoning bylaw. I don't think that's an appropriate measure to deal with that type of situation. That's something that we should look at when we're dealing with brownfield sites and invest Stratford should be involved in that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, I was going to ask either our planner or the people that are producer or the that are doing the property change. It's like we have quite a traffic problem at that lane, any at that corner. Anytime you come up to it, the traffic's backed up. And and we heard earlier, they're talking about some changes there like in both in in twenty twenty-three. If we do have have this development, is there any short term like solutions up there like a turning lane on like on the right side of Lauren Avenue or anything else? Because I think the traffic is a problem right now, but to add a development there, I think it's even going to exasperate the problem. So is there any short term like help up that there until we have a long-term solution?
Through his worship, if council is comfortable, Julia Salvini from Salvini Consulting, who authored and prepared the traffic study might be best to answer that question if she's able to have her mic turned on.
Clerk, there we go.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me? It's Julia Salvini here.
Hi, Julia. Yes, I can.
Super. Thanks. Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's a really good question. It's interesting. The Counselor Clifford mentioned that the intersection has a lot of backups because in fact, that's exactly what we found in our study. The concern at the or the problem at the intersection is not so much a capacity issue. We can get the traffic through it, but there's lots of queuing, as you mentioned. We did look at what kinds of solutions would help fix that. We looked at two different scenarios. So one would be if we kept it as a traffic signal and we were to add turning lanes to the intersection in twenty twenty-three, we looked at that scenario and what that would look like. So we made a recommendation for what that would look like and we drew it up so that city staff could evaluate how much property might be needed to do that. We looked at a second scenario that would involve a roundabout and again, we we tested it to show that it would it would address the issues. And then we looked at what the sort of spatial representation of it would be and how much space would be needed to make sure that the the property was identified. Given that the municipal money is designated in twenty twenty-three, it's a little tricky to do anything in advance of that, given the timeframe that it takes to do these kinds of things. And also given that the city hasn't actually decided, are they going to make improvements to the intersection as a signalized intersection? Or would they proceed as a roundabout? It's difficult to sort of pull out one or two of those changes and make them in advance. I think if if there was new information from the city saying this is the way we want to go, we want to, for example, if you wanted to keep it as a traffic signal and make improvements, there may be an opportunity to do certain improvements more quickly and push some of them into the twenty twenty-three timeframe. But without that information, it's very difficult to do anything in advance. Hoping that answers the question.
Thank you. Any other member of council having a question right now for Ms. Salvini or Ms. Baker? Seeing none, there are no delegations registered for this item. So I'll just ask Ms. Atkins in the clerk's office, is there any questions from the live chat area?
Through your worship, there are no questions in the chat area.
All right, council, I'll just ask one more time. Is there any questions you may have? Ms. Baker, is there any closing comments you'd like to offer?
Nothing further. Thank you.
All right. City council intends to consider this application at a future planning and heritage committee meeting where members of council will have an opportunity for full discussion on the application after reviewing comments received from the public at this time. If anyone would like to receive further notice for this application, please email clerks at stratford.ca. A video of this meeting will be posted to the city's website and this public meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, Ms. Baker. We will now go to our third scheduled public meeting for today. And the purpose of this meeting is to give council and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to zone change application Z zero five dash twenty. The application affects the property with municipal address of one zero four one Erie Street in the city of Stratford. The order procedure for this meeting is as follows. Staff will present the application. The applicant or their agent will then make a presentation. Council may ask questions for the purposes of clarifying the application, but are cautioned not to make comments or take a position on the application of this public meeting. Registered delegations will be asked for their presentations, comments and questions. The public is advised that if a person has not provided counsel with oral submissions at a public meeting or written submissions before a bylaws adopted a decision or a decision is made, the local planning appeal tribunal has the power to dismiss the appeal. The public is also advised that comments expressed in written material presented are a matter of public record for full disclosure. Are there any questions as to this order of procedure? Seeing none, I'll ask Jeff Bannon from our staff to present the application. Mr. Bannon.
Thank you, your worship. Application is Z zero five dash twenty. It's been submitted by Michael Elbs to change the zoning of the portion of the property at ten forty-one Erie Street from a prime industrial I one dash I I one dash one zone to an I one dash one special zone in order to to permit a restaurant with a drive-through to recognize existing gross floor area for the main building of three hundred and eighty-five square meters to recognize existing reduced setbacks from Erie Street of thirteen point eight meters to a building and two point three meters to a canopy. Subject lands are located on the west side of Embro Road, south of Pacham Avenue. They have an approximate area of one point four six hectares and a lot frontage of eighty-six point two meters. Lands are designated industrial area, permits a range of uses, including manufacturing, manufacturing, assembly, repair, wholesaling, the storage of goods, secondary uses that do not detract from the area for industrial purposes or those that do not conflict with existing or potential future industrial uses are permitted. Erie Street and Amber Road are both classified as arterial roads. The lands are zoned prime industrial I one dash one, which permits a car wash, a gas bar, motor vehicle body and repair shops and service trades. Engineering services have noted that they do not object to the zone change, but note that the comments provided from discussions in March have yet to be addressed. The Transit Fire Department and Building Services all have no concerns. Notice of the application was sent to twelve surrounding property owners and we have not received any comments to date and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bannon. I now invite the applicant, Michael L. L. Debs, to present his application if you'd like.
Through your worship, neither the property owner nor the agent registered to speak with respect to this application.
Thank you. Are there any questions to members of council for Mr. Bannon about this application? Counselor Henderson.
I thought I heard they were going to put a car wash in there. I don't see it in the plans or maybe I'm missing it.
Mr. Bannon.
Through your worship. Car wash is a permitted use on the property and I believe that they did show it on one of the concept plans. It might be difficult to see, but I think they showed a stacking spaces going around the outside of the car wash.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions for members of council for Mr. Bannon? There are no delegations registered. Ms. Atkins, is there anything in the chat section that needs to be read into the record?
Through your worship, there are no comments that have been submitted through the question and answer feature.
Okay. Seeing that council has no other questions, at this time, I'll just say that city council intends to consider this application at a future planning and heritage committee meeting where members of council will have an opportunity for full discussion of the application after reviewing comments received from the public at this time. If anyone would like further notice of this application, please email clerks at stratford.ca. A video of this meeting will be posted to the city's website. Thank you very much. And this public meeting is adjourned and council will reconvene. And as we reconvene, we just have one item. It's the confirmatory bylaw for this afternoon's proceedings and it can be read a first and second time. Counselor Seven and Counselor Resalakos. All those in favor? Post Fenny and that's carried third and final reading of the confirmatory bylaws, Counselor Ritzman, Counselor Burbak. Discussion. All those in favor? And that is carried and a motion to adjourn this afternoon's proceedings, Counselor Clifford and Counselor Beatty. All those in favor? Post Fenny and that's carried. Thank you, everyone. Have a good afternoon.